Okay, this meeting is called back to order at 6:39 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I think we're too far away.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second that the agenda of October 1st, 2024 be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Can I have a motion and a second that the board approves the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Krista, second. I was telling one. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Can I please have a motion and a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, the school lunch fund cash report, and the school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending June 30th, 2024 be approved?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? It was Aleah. Aleah was the motion and Nicole was the second. And then all in favor. Special report?
So, good evening, everyone. We are going to have a special report. We'd like to welcome Mr. Tom Zuber from Mengel, Metzger, Barr &amp; Company, who will share an external audit presentation with us this evening.
Yep. The clicker should be working for you, Tom.
Does it work?
Very good. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. And to talk a little bit about the audit of the June 30th, 2024 basic financial statements for the school district. You should all have received in your board packets the final copy of the report and internal control communication. And I'm pleased to report, we did issue an unqualified opinion, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So that's really what you're looking for in the audit of the basic financial statements. So that really is kind of the standard opinion. And as part of the audit process, we did meet with the audit committee back in September 25th and had a very nice conversation with the audit committee. We talked about year-over-year variances. We talked about budget variances. We talked about fund balances, reserve accounts, internal controls, checks and balances. So we had a very nice meeting reviewing the basic financial statements. And, you know, these financial statements really are the results of a budget process that you started more than two years ago, right? And a lot has happened over those two years. So, you know, we're pleased to report the district continues to be in good financial condition. So that's very positive. Like all districts, there are still challenges out there that you folks face, state aid uncertainties, certainly with what's going on with the different formula aids out there and working on looking at how the state can potentially modify that. It could certainly impact districts going forward. Obviously, the property tax has certainly been challenges for school districts over the years, employee benefit challenges, inflation, even the federal stimulus dollars, right? Those dollars that the federal government helped school districts and other municipalities utilize to kind of get over that COVID period, how you manage those can be very challenging, okay? And again, the district continues to be in good financial condition. You've really done a good job in terms of managing not only those federal stimulus dollars, but also the long-term planning that the district does as it relates to your reserve accounts, okay? So the district has several different reserves, and that's really the area that not only we look at, but also those bond rating agencies out there. They look at how are you developing in your long-term financial plan with regard to the financial condition of the district. And the school district is really doing a very nice job. You have a very nice reserve plan that talks about all of the different reserves that the school district has. So you're really doing a very nice job of that. And, you know, some of the other areas, some of the key reserves that the district has really developed over the years, certainly that are very important to the district in the long-term health, your employee retirement contribution reserve, your teacher's retirement contribution reserve. So again, two reserves that the district has created really to protect the district against any big spikes in those rates, right? Because those retirement systems, they basically say, here's the rate, please pay it, okay? And then you have to work your budget and develop your budget around that. So you've developed those reserves, again, very beneficial reserves in the long-term planning of the school district. So you're doing a great job there. Capital reserves, again, very nice reserves to have, really a couple of different reasons, right? To help with the long-term planning, help with your capital plan. Certainly, those capital reserves can be used to help reduce the local impact to the taxpayer on those large capital projects. You have a nice building reserve. And if you recall, just recently, the voters approved a bus reserve, right? To really a fairly significant bus reserve, really to deal with some of the challenges that districts are seeing with the electric, the zero emission bus mandates, right? So again, you're doing a very good job in really looking at the future and planning for the future. So again, you know, really very positive from the long-term financial aspect. And within the reserves, you were able to fund those reserves at the end of the year. So you ended the year in very good financial condition. You were able to allocate some of those dollars into those reserves as well as use some of those reserves, right? The voters approved using 1.3 million of the bus reserve and again, using some of the other dollars in a tax surcharge reserve. So just one of the other reserves that you have. In addition to that, you know, besides the reserves, you know, the district does support the budget process with fund balance, right? So the district appropriated fund balance to support the 2024 budget of about $1.7 million. So that's up slightly from last year. But again, those dollars are dollars that you're using to support next year's budget, okay? And for a district this size, certainly that $1.7 million is manageable, right? Those dollars are used to offset the tax levy. So again, for a district this size, very, very manageable from the long-term financial planning. And just a quick look at the different reserves, I kind of highlighted a couple of the key reserves. And again, we spent some time with the audit committee on the reserves, kind of highlighting the different rules and regulations and each reserve having a specific purpose, and they all follow general municipal law or education law in terms of how those are managed. So again, you're doing a very good job relating to that, okay? Couple of the other highlights that we talked a little bit about, you know, we talked about the federal stimulus dollars. And again, you spent about $2.6 million in federal stimulus dollars, okay? And again, as those dollars continue to end, how you manage those dollars. And the district really had a nice plan where you really focused on some of the one-time expenditures, using those Chris, the funds, some of the different projects that you could use those eligible costs for. So you've done a nice job, and you also have a nice plan for any of those reoccurring expenditures, bringing them back to the general fund. So you've done a nice job there, okay? So again, you've really done a nice job in looking at the long-term planning of the school district and developing those reserves and really utilizing those as part of that long-term process, okay? In addition to the basic financial statements, we also talked about internal controls, checks and balances. You know, and again, as part of the audit, we have to review and document all of the different checks and balances and processes and procedures you have over the different financial cycles. And I had mentioned no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. That's very positive. A few minor procedural items that we noted, just to recommend the district to enhance kind of some of their processes and procedures. And again, there were two items we talked about last year that the district implemented. Very positive from the audit standpoint. It really shows that the district is reviewing the recommendations and reacting to those recommendations. So, you know, from an auditor coming in and looking in, it just shows that the district is reacting to those recommendations and taking corrective actions. So again, very positive from the financial statement standpoint. So again, we did meet, I think it was last week, they all get jumbled together this time of year, but we again, we met last week, had a very good meeting, had a nice discussion. Again, you're doing a very good job in terms of the long-term planning, utilizing those reserves, talking about those reserves, and really utilizing those long-term planning aspects very positively, okay? So that's about a 70-page document. All righty. Hopefully not too boring either. So do you have any questions on anything you received in your board packets?
Board members' questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I just really want to thank you, Tom, for always answering all of our questions, because I feel like I bombard you sometimes, and I really appreciate you putting it in terms where I can actually understand what you're saying. So thank you for taking the time to explain everything. The board appreciates that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Tom, for joining us tonight. And as we're transitioning, we're going to invite our district security preparedness manager, Mr. Brandon Fox. We have been talking a lot about how we can enhance our K-12 school security. Brandon and I have met many times since I've taken the role of superintendent. He also meets regularly with Dr. Dan Driffl and George English. So we have a system for meeting regularly to talk about the needs that we have in our district, but more importantly, systems and structures to ensure that everyone is safe and secure within our schools and across the district. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Brandon so he can speak a little bit more deeply around some of the comprehensive measures that we have as a district.
Thank you. And thank you, board, for having me slide over to a different chair and talk a little bit about what I do for the district, or what we do for the district, is a better way to put it. As I was putting this presentation together, it occurred to me that while it's all security-related, the topics that I'm going to cover are quite different from one another. So I note typically, and I do have a slide at the end for questions and comments, but if there are questions or comments that come up during the presentation, please don't hesitate to let me know, because I think the discussion can be very helpful. And also, I'm recognizing the development of some of our audience members tonight. So if I stumble a little bit, it's because I'm trying to change words that I had in my head to, for our audience members. So anytime I talk about school safety, I feel like it's important every single time to highlight the fact that the number-one protective factor for a school, any school or school district, is your school climate. And for years now, sitting in this room with the board, we have heard presentations on social-emotional learning, community building days, equitable grading practices, MTSS. And it's amazing the amount of work that has gone in. It's amazing the amount of change that's happened. But at the same time, as I'm sitting over there listening, I know that that work has some other consequences that are just a benefit for us. We are making our schools safer by putting all of these practices into place because we are improving the climate of our schools. And I can't stress that enough. In fact, it's so important to me that every measure that we talk about tonight, or every, any measure that we have coming forward, whether it's a new technology, a new policy that we put into place, we'll always measure it against how it's going to affect our school climate, because we can't sacrifice that end, that end of things. And that's not just my opinion. Every comprehensive school safety study I've read has always led with the fact that your school climate is your number-one protective factor. The two that I listed here are the ones that I'm most familiar with. Dr. Dewey Cornell and Dr. Peter Shiraz, in the late 1990s and early 2000s, conducted the Virginia Study. And when I always, when I talk about this study out loud, it seems too simple to talk about, but what they looked at was what makes school the safest? Is it high levels of support? Is it high levels of structure? And of course, it's one of those studies where you know the answer before you do the study, it's both, right? And so, you know, all the measures that we talked about before are improving those for our district. And the Secret Service in 2001 highlighted the fact that when your school culture is that much more improved, it's much more likely that students are going to come forward and let staff members know when there's a concern for their building. And that's one of the things that's ultimately very, very important for us. So in our district, we have our district and building-level behavioral intervention teams. Believe it or not, this is probably where I put most of my focus and most of my energy into in my work, but it's probably the hardest slide I have to explain here. Through the Trauma Illness and Grief Consortium, I do a three to four-hour presentation on this topic, so trying to fit it into one slide is a little bit tough. But basically, what we are doing is we are assessing threats. In fact, you can see in the statement, it says, "The purpose of this team is to create a safer environment by addressing potential threats before they materialize into serious instances." And when I was looking over my notes before I came down here, I want to change that sentence to safer environment by assessing and then addressing potential environments. It's very important, those words are very important, because in this work, we have to make sure that we are always paying attention to what our biases might be. And if most of my work is looking at threats, I don't want to assume that everything is threatening. In fact, I have a note in my office that says that not every threat poses a danger, right? Oftentimes, these are behaviors, expressions that mean something much different. Someone might be asking for help, somebody might need help, and it's important for us to recognize those pieces. So to give a little bit of background of what we do, the Secret Service and the FBI have been using threat assessment and management strategies for decades. They've been using it for international terrorism, they've been using it for, to protect our politicians. And after Columbine, the Secret Service and the Department of Education came together and worked on a plan where schools could use the tools that they're using to assess threats and bring it to the school level. And in the last two decades, we've done a ton of work. Penfield was an early adopter of some of this work. But in 2018, we took a very deep dive into this topic, and we had over 50 staff members throughout the district trained on how to conduct this work, the tools that are necessary to use it appropriately. And then we developed a system within our districts where now we have, we have a district-wide team that meets twice a month. That's a multidisciplinary team made up of admin, mental health, teachers. We also have, obviously, myself, folks from the Monroe County Sheriff's Office, and folks from the Monroe County Office of Mental Health, all getting together twice a month to talk about anything new that is coming to us or existing places that we feel like we might have some need and we could address some concerns. The work that we were trained in is specifically targeted, this is where I'm going to try to change some words here, to certain type of behaviors that would often be called targeted. Those are still very, very rare events. Targeted behavior is a planned event, something that you can see if investigations take place over time. Most of the bad behaviors that we deal with are more on the emotional side. I do want this board and the community to know that we do address those at that meeting as well, even though that's not the specifics of what we're trained in. The emotional side of things, when two people have a disagreement and they make bad choices towards one another, it's a topic that's much more difficult to plan for, because things happen so fast. But we are in a good position to try to support all of those who might be in that environment. So next on here, I have our hall monitors. I kind of consider them sort of the heart and soul of our security in the district. They are the boots on the ground. They are the, you can see all the topics that they do on a day-in and day-out basis. They're the ones out in traffic, 180 school days a year, whether it's really hot or it's really cold out there. A lot of the topics there, I'm going to go into more detail in future slides. But the level to which this group puts effort in and cares about our kids is amazing. I know a few of them, just to give you a physical example, I always think it's an accomplishment to reach 10,000 steps a day. And I know a couple of those folks go between 20,000 and 30,000 steps each day, and they're for our kids. So I can't thank them enough. They are so important to the work that we do. Next is our Safe Schools Helpline. So even in all of our efforts to have the best school climate we can have and to encourage people to come forward and express their concerns that they might be hearing, we know that depending on a person's life experiences or the situation they're dealing with, they may not always be comfortable to come forward themselves. So the Safe Schools Helpline is in place to allow them to have an anonymous place to report to an agency. And you can see that, you know, you can call, text, and you can go online to submit your concern. And then there are people on the other end that will triage that concern. They have very similar training to folks that work at like the 2-on-1 Lifeline Centers, so that they can determine whether or not that concern is an urgent concern, or is it something that they can email the district about. If it's an urgent concern, they will immediately call the building principal that's associated with that concern. If the principal is not able to answer the phone, the next phone call goes to myself. And if I don't answer the phone, then it goes to Dr. Potter. And if none of us are able to answer it, it next goes to the Monroe County Sheriff, which we ultimately try to avoid, because law enforcement working with anonymous tips is not how they're built. Thankfully, that doesn't really happen. It doesn't really rarely get past the principal. If it's an email concern, then all three of us will receive that email, and we can deal with it in a timely manner there. But more and more, you're starting to see this recommendation come from federal guidelines to have this type of service in place. This goes back to that Secret Service research I talked about before. The ability to report concerns in a timely manner and get it to a voice, voice-to-voice connection, is shown over and over again, a way, a very powerful way to prevent tragedy. We have plenty of technology in place. If you, board members came in tonight and came through door 50, you probably badged in. That's through our access control system. So that has a card reader that unlocks our doors. We can set timers on it on when it can be used, and we can change people's permissions. It also helps us deal with holidays and helps us deal with keeping the building secure. We have cameras all throughout our buildings, both inside and outside. Our hall monitors monitor those cameras during the day, and those cameras are also recording, so they help us review footage, so that we can take a look at things that might have happened in the past couple of days or past couple of weeks. Recently, the district replaced all of its lockdown buttons. If you're unfamiliar of what a lockdown button is, when a lockdown button is pressed, the access control system that we just talked about shuts off all the doors on the outside. All the fire doors close within the building, and a call immediately goes out to 911. We replaced that system from the previous one we owned, because we weren't happy with the speed in which the calls were going from when the button was pressed to dispatch at 911. We were able to time that at the suggestion of Deputy Thurston from the Monroe County Sheriff's Office. The new system, we're very happy to report, is very fast. So we're very, very happy to see the changes on that. And then we also have our Raptor system. And Raptor for us, at this stage, is two things. It's one, our visitor management system, and I'll talk a little bit about how visitors come in in a minute, but it scans a visitor's driver's license and makes sure it's a person that is safe to enter our building. And then we have opened up to all of our admin and teachers the ability to put their emergency management system on their phone. What that allows a staff member to do anywhere in the building is put the building into an emergency procedure, so that we can act as fast as possible. It's another point where I'm going to change some of my words, but what we learned after Parkland is that time is very, very important. And if a message needs to travel across a very large building like the one we're in now, we can lose time. And so if a person is on that other end of the building and can put a procedure into place that's going to help us all, it's a very large advantage. And then once they're in, once that has been initiated, it goes out to the whole building. Anyone that has chosen to put that app on their phone or has the program open on their computer, so they're alerted that that situation has started. And then we can communicate within that app, so that we can have silent dialogue. That also, within the app, allows the user to use their native dialer to dial 911 if that's necessary for the procedure that they're in. It also meets Alyssa's Law, which is not, Alyssa's Law is not on the books in New York State yet. It's been recommended by the governor as for schools to look at, but basically, what that means, Alyssa's Law is giving staff members the ability to communicate quickly. Those lockdown buttons, the Raptor, all of that meets Alyssa's Law's requirement and helps deal with that time problem that they understood better after Parkland. Our access procedures, so your ability to come into the building. Every building at this point is running a single point of access during the school day. Everyone comes in through the main entrance. I am happy to report that as of the next summer, all six schools will have a secure entrance. So what that will look like for folks coming to our buildings is we typically have three types of visitors. We will have folks coming into the building that are expected. They're here for a meeting with an administrator, a teacher, a mental health person. And what we do is we share those meeting invites with the hall monitors that are working at the front desk. So when that person comes to the outside of the building, to that first intercom, they state who they are, the hall monitor has been expecting them, they buzz them in through the first part of the secure vestibule. They then come to the window, give their driver's license, that's run through Raptor to make sure they're a person that is okay to come in the building, and then they're granted access into the building. The second, and probably the most popular person coming to our buildings is people dropping off things for our kiddos. Kids forgot an instrument, lunch, bookbag, whatever, have you. So they also will come to the outside of that building, they'll communicate through the intercom, they'll be let into the inside of the vestibule, they then drop off the materials inside the vestibule, that's as far as they go. Once everyone's gone, we'll get that stuff into the building and then get it to the students as they need. And then at times, we have an unexpected visitor, and that's when the hall monitors will know that that's someone we're going to spend a little bit more time on, to make sure it's a person that should be coming into the building. So whether or not that's communicating with an administrator, or a nurse, or someone in the counseling office, that way we check all those boxes to make sure we know who is coming in. And then I have a note on there about all doors being checked after student arrival. This is an important one for a number of reasons. The audit that created my position suggested that twice a year, all the doors be checked, just to make sure that they were working appropriately. So we started that practice. And then we had a couple of situations that were bad throughout the country, and part of the problem was the doors were compromised. So we wanted to up the level of which we were doing with our doors. So what practice we started a few years ago is, once students have arrived in the building, we have a hall monitor go around the entire building and checking each external door, making sure it's shut and locked. I also ask that person to test the door out every once in a while. Our standard is that that door should be able to be opened and closed on its own without being pulled closed, because we know that human behavior, people are probably going to forget to pull. We also encounter weather issues, and that's kind of what that security audit was getting at, is we want to make sure that the weather is not deteriorating our doors, sulk getting in the bottom of the frame, or heat expanding a door can cause a door to not be able to shut. So our hall monitors, because it's the same person doing that job every day, it's very obvious to them that there's changes that needs to take place. They'll alert their building admin, or myself will put a work order in and get that door attended to the way it should be. We have spent a lot of time and energy advancing our student attendance within the building. You may or may not know this, but as students get older, sometimes they are harder to target. they are harder to find throughout the building. Um, and if a student, if a school or a family is facing an emergency, and we don't know the whereabouts of that child quickly, that is only gonna increase stress levels, right? So there's been a lot of effort made to, we've put scanners at places like the counseling office, the ad, the admins office, the nurses' office. Um, if you're at the high school for, for open lunch, people scan out, that reports information right to Infinite Campus. So if it was a parent that was to come in and, and the student is not exactly, you know, they're not in the lunch, they went to see a counselor, whatever, we know where that student has moved and when they've moved, and that, that helps relieve a lot of stress that can take place. We've also emphasized this in our drills. Um, the school districts are required to, uh, each school is required to have eight evacuation drills and four lockdown drills, um, during the school year. And we put a lot of emphasis on teachers of taking account of, for who they're with during those drills, just in case we would ever have to practice them in a real situation. We're gonna need to be able to count for all people. Raptor also happened, helps us with that. Um, so when one of those, um, doing this like I'm holding my actual phone, when a person initiates one of those emergencies, one of the abilities that they have to do is it instantly connects with Infinite Campus, and you can start to take attendance for yourself and for your students, and also give a health update about how each person is doing in the space that you're in. You also can record the space that you're in. So, um, lots of, lots of initiatives and improvements there. We have great partnerships with our local law enforcement. Um, when I first took over this position, um, it was one of my primary goals was to sort of improve our relationships. Not that we had bad relationships, I just wanted more relationship with the responders that would be coming here. Um, and one example that I give often is I learned that our local first responders, especially in Monroe County, don't really have a place to practice the skills that they have to, they have to do. They have one little place, you've probably seen it on the expressway, I think it's 390, it's a burnt building off of Scottsville Road. Um, other than that, there's not a lot of indoor places. So we have opened up our auditorium in the past for the sheriff to come in and practice things that they need to do there. A couple summers ago, we used the math, the math wing for both the sheriff and EMTs to come in and practice the work that they might have to do and how they would advance into a building and, and what that looks like. And then we have other initiatives, like, I can advertise here for an October 24th, um, we're gonna host a, host a presentation given by the FBI Field Office. And that presentation is gonna talk about, um, internet and social media safety for our students. They are going to gear it K-12, because they are recognizing that, um, that world is coming earlier and earlier to many of our youth. Um, I have read a couple of times, it's going to be a frank discussion, so it is, it is a presentation for adults only. Um, we are hosting it, we can't send it out to others per the FBI. Um, so we're gonna host it here in the high school, I believe up in H-21, um, we're, we're gonna have more details coming out for that very soon. So that's another example. Um, we have deputies walking through our buildings quite frequently, and we have a great relationship with Deputy Fong. She's out of the, um, the downtown office, she is a liaison officer, and she comes around to a lot of our schools to teach bike safety, driving safety. Um, she, she'll do, I know she's done some read-alongs in classrooms. Her, her goal is to basically build a really good relationships with kids, so that kids can start having interactions with law enforcement that's positive, because unfortunately, too many times, people's first experience with law enforcement is during an emergency, and that's really not the best, best time to meet people. So that's a big, uh, a big goal of hers. I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on the district-wide safety plan, because I present on that in, in June, but I did wanna highlight that that does, is kind of our umbrella of, of what we do here in the district. Um, we also know that having a multi-disciplinary team is very possible, powerful for our work, and the Health and Safety Committee, that is made up of not just school district members, but also community members, gives input on how that is designed and, and best practices. And we've really gathered some really powerful insight, uh, from some of the community members. We've got folks, uh, remember, we had a gentleman who was retired out of Kodak, who was a chemical hygiene guy. We currently have Brighton Fire Department, so they all bring a lot of valuable information, uh, to those meetings and the, and the work that we do here in the district. So in conclusion, I wanted to end where I started, school climate, the most important part of, of school safety and, and the part that we lean into the most. Um, it's always important to make sure that everyone feels like they have an avenue to report concerns. And I get a lot of questions sometimes, how is it that I went from being a school counselor to overseeing security? That jump doesn't make sense for a lot of folks, but, um, in my vision, it, it's really just, it's, it's almost the same work. I'm just connecting people with, with the help that they need. Um, and then I just have to learn a couple things about some other topics, and, and we're off and running. So, uh, we are continuing to, to work on school improvement, security, like Dr. Potter said. Um, we've got some exciting initiatives to talk about, and I'm looking forward to some of the next stages of what we, what we might be able to accomplish. Any questions or comments?
Great job.
Very impressive.
Yeah, very nice.
So grateful.
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
You got it.
Thank you.
I think your background in counseling is exactly a benefit, not a plus. It's just, your lens is very, very.
It's what got me into the threat assessment work early on, so that's, that's how I, I think that's how I got tapped.
Thank you so much.
You got it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So now, we welcome our student representative, Helen Broikos. So Helen's gonna give us a student update.
Hello. Um, in terms of district-wide, there's a lot going on. Um, we had a wonderful homecoming celebration with some great activities, like food trucks and live music and a kids' area, which was new. Um, and happy Principals Month to all the amazing principals in the district, some of whom are in the audience tonight. Uh, at PHS, um, Thursday was the first Community Building Day of the year, and students did a number of team games and get-to-know-you activities. The boys volleyball team is already having a fantastic season. Um, they've had a number of wins and are taking on Brighton tonight, started about 15 minutes ago. Um, the club fair happened on Friday, dozens of clubs recruited new members. Um, I'm a part of a couple, and it's always such like a great event to up engagement in our extracurriculars. Um, eight seniors had the honor of being named National Merit Commended Students. Uh, the urban suburban students celebrated the back-to-school season with an ice cream social. Uh, the high school is celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with posters around the school and music over the morning announcements. And rehearsals for the Mousetrap, the fall play, are in full swing. At Bay Trail, the first Best Buddies meeting will be on Monday. Students are gonna learn about inclusion and meet new friends and have totally lots of fun. Um, on Thursday, the International Club will celebrate Oktoberfest with traditional German food and games. No alcohol. Have confirmed Penprints, the literary magazine, is running a scary story contest for their October issue. And Community Building Day was also a huge hit at Bay Trail. Students especially loved the game Score a Goal, which involved coordinating with your team members to get paper into a recycling bin or a box. Um, at Scribner, there's got a lot of field trips. Um, the Challenger Learning Center, which is focused on STEM, Schutz Apple Mill, and Longacre Farm are just some of them.
Schutz.
Schutz. Schutz Apple Mill. Sorry. Um, at Indian Landing, the First Partners Pride Assembly was this week, and Friday was IL and Red Wings Family Night. At Harris Hill, the PTA has organized a fundraiser to sponsor the tons of fun events that happen throughout the year, and Cobble's reached their goal for the Fun Run.
That's one.
Thank you.
We are so fortunate to have Helen. Helen, thank you. And in order to serve as a board representative, Helen is going to now take her oath this evening. So we'll turn it over to Mrs. Scott to help us with that.
Are you ready, Helen?
I'm so ready.
Okay. I'm gonna ask that, um, you repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Student Representative of the Board of Education.
Of the Office of Student Representative of the Board of Education.
In the Penfield Central School District.
In the Penfield Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I will share student and staff honors. Um, and there typically is some overlap, and actually, thank you, Dr. Driffl. Um, we'll also have some Penfield Central School District updates. We're going to invite Principal Watt and many people from our Penfield High School to come up and share a school showcase. And then we'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl, who will take us into some business updates. And so now, you'll, you may hear a bit of redundancy from the messages that Helen shared and some that I'd like to honor and celebrate as well. But I wanna start with our National Merit Commended Scholars. These students scored well on the initial SAT and the National Merit Scholarship qualifying tests. And we would like to recognize them for their academic ability and potential for college success. We also have students that we want to congratulate, um, for being selected to perform at the prestigious, um, New York State School Music Association. And I'll name the students. We have Allison Glazza, Nico Jeffrey, Madeline Leahy, Jessica Post, Anna Turley, and Alyssa Yang. Christopher McCusker was also selected as an alternate. We have our AP Scholars, and we want to congratulate 176 Penfield High School students and two, and the 2024 graduates who were named as our AP Scholars by College Board. And we also want to acknowledge and congratulate our Penfield students who were selected to participate in the Rochester Philharmonic Youth Orchestra for the 2024-25 school year. Those students include Lilia Nadir Abraham, Eva Chadwick, Ben Doily, Sharon Lynn, Alyssa Miller, and Alyssa Yang. So congratulations to all of those students and their honors. Now I wanna transition to talk a little bit about our homecoming celebration, and though it was several weeks ago, um, we didn't have a, a second meeting in September that was publicly, um, you know, broadcasted. So I, I wanted to take some time to just acknowledge the hard work and efforts that came out of both the office from our athletics director, Mrs. Mary Beth Walker, and our Penfield High School principal, Leanna Watt. Their leadership and their organization of our district's homecoming celebration was just fantastic. For any of you that went and were able to participate in this evening, it truly was a full-family K-12 event. And I'd also like to share a special thanks to each one of our schools, whether it was a PTA, a PTO, or a PTSA, because the partnership that we have with each one of those groups is outstanding. And their work and contribution for setting up and organizing as well should be acknowledged. So I just want to thank all those that were a part of making our homecoming celebration such a success. Um, I also wanna share that I will be hosting, um, for our families and caregivers, coffee conversations. They will both be held on Tuesday, October 29th. There will be two times. The first will be in, in the morning from 9:15 to 10:15. And that same day on October 29th, we'll host an evening session from 6 o'clock to 7 PM. Both will take place at the Scribner Road Elementary School in the cafeteria. So I look forward to having families and even faculty come and join us to engage in these conversations, um, just so that we can listen and lean in to support some of your questions, your wonderings, and just talk about how has the school year begun for each one of you. And so now, I wanna take some time to recognize our school board members for their commitment to the children in this district. Our School Board Recognition Week is October 18th through the 24th, and I really want to share with the community and raise the awareness for the outstanding work and the crucial role that the school board, board members have within our district. The Penfield Central School District Board members demonstrate a commitment to public education. Our board members take on one of the most important citizen responsibilities, which is to oversee the education of all of the students in this district. The Board of Education guides our district and is flexible and responsive to the needs of the community. They dedicate their time to improving public education. And with our students in mind, our school board creates a shared vision for the future of education, sets the direction of the school district to achieve the highest student performance, provides accountability for student achievement results, in partnership oversees our district $119 million budget, helps us develop a budget which is presented to the community, aligns district resources to improve achievement and the social, emotional well-being of each student, and supports a healthy school district culture in which our faculty and climate for which our students can learn and grow in. So I know that their work is tireless, and it's all done as volunteers in our community, but I just want you to know how grateful I am. And on behalf of our district, we thank you so much for your service. So each one of you has a red folder, and inside your red folder, if you notice, you were given pencil, pens this evening instead of pencils, because you'll be responsible for signing some labels. We also included for you the books that were chosen, um, by our district library department chair, Lisa Edborg. And the labels will go inside the books. So take some time before you leave tonight and sign those labels, so that we can put them inside our books. And then you'll be able to notice the books that will be dedicated in your honor to each one of our schools. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And our last part of our Penfield Central School District updates, I'm going to turn to Dr. Maloney.
So I am super excited to share with you, um, that for the 2025 AP exams, uh, they will be purchased through a BOSI's coaster, so families, students will no longer pay for AP exams. Um, I know, it's awesome. And apparently, um, you know, this, it's, we're able to do this, and it's really, it's awesome. Um, so we will be registering all students for, uh, or excuse me, we will be purchasing exams for all students who are registered to a course, to an AP course. And here's the, it, it's like, it can, it can't get any better, but it does. Um, the district will receive BOSI's aid on the total amount spent on the AP exams. So, um, that means that every dollar we spend, we get BOSI's aid back. So, um, and then if successful, this practice will continue into the, into following years. So, I know, isn't this, so we wanted to share, um, teachers, the information was shared with teachers yesterday, and then we wanted to share here with, um, the board and the community. And then, um, Principal Watt and I will be drafting a communication to families.
That's great.
Isn't it? Isn't it cool?
Okay, so with that, that's a perfect transition.
Perfect segue.
To our school showcase with Principal Watt and members from the Penfield High School. Um, I think what's really important to acknowledge is new this year, we've asked each one of our schools, so it's a treat for us, to have our schools to come and share and highlight some of the great happenings that are occurring across our district. And as part of our first school showcase, we've invited both faculty and students to talk about the wonderful things that are occurring right here in the high school. So, turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us, first of all, tonight. Um, and before we do introductions, I just wanna take an opportunity to thank and acknowledge the grade-level administrators who are here tonight as well. Um, we have Jenna Felice, who works with our ninth graders, Michelle Sick, who works with our 12th graders, and Charlie Rudes, who works with 11th graders, and Will Kaufman, um, who works with our 10th graders, apologizes for not being able to be here tonight. His brother got married tonight. So that's, it's, he should be there. He should be there. So, um, anyways, I share that because especially Will has put so much time and effort into our community buil- So anyways, I share that because especially Will has put so much time and effort into our community building days this year. This is really so much of his work and leadership this school year. So I know it was hard for him to not be here, but we were like, you gotta go to the wedding. So with that, I just want to frame this very briefly. We are going to share with you, as some of you know, how this all came to be a few years ago. This is actually our third year of community building. So we're going to talk to you briefly tonight about how it started, where we've been, the work that we did this summer, as we've learned and really tried to grow and do better with each year of community building, and kind of what our plan looks like for this coming school year.
Hi, my name is Theo. I'm a senior at Penfield, which is crazy. But so far, our community building days have just continued to improve over the past three years that we've done them. When I was a freshman, we were just starting, and it was a little chaotic and a little confusing. And we didn't, especially as a freshman, I wasn't really sure what the main goal of community building was. And as time has gone on and as we have started to include students into the, like, planning of our community building days and our restorative practice committee, we've seen a huge increase in student involvement and enjoyment in the community building days. Alongside that, we have learned to structure the days a lot better than we had in the past. Last year, we were doing kind of, like, we staggered when the community building would be throughout the day. But this year, it is the same period the entire year. So you're really focused on creating those connections, like, with that same class period, the entire year, so that you can really, like, hone in on building that community, like, to the best of our ability. Along with that, I just had one more point. Oh, and our focus of community building has shifted from what it used to be. So originally, it was focused on, like, it was really deep, kind of. And it was more of, like, looking into yourself, which is totally, completely valid. But a lot of students weren't comfortable sharing those really personal aspects of their lives. So we've shifted community building to look more towards the, like, competitive, like, team-building kind of side of things. And I think that that has also immensely improved the way that students view community building, especially this year. I've had peers tell me such positive feedback even from our first day. So like I said, we're only going up from here.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Jen Vimmer. I teach math at the high school. So this is about 75% of the team that met this summer, and we met for two full days. And Leanna and Will had shared with us that the administrative team had done a book study on Unearthing Joy over the summer. And the book talks more about how you can build school climate by finding students' joy, not forcing them to like academics or forcing them to like what they're learning, but figuring out what brings them joy and how to connect that joy to the things that they do during the school day. Can you go one more from there? And one of the quotes from the book was that after COVID-19, people spoke of learning loss, but nobody talked about joy loss. And as a teacher in the building, one of the reasons that I joined the committee is I felt the same way Theo did, that we didn't really know, we knew what the purpose of the community building days were as teachers, but we didn't know how to project that onto our students. We were still kind of reeling from these chaotic years and trying to build up a community in our classroom that just didn't exist beyond our classroom. We could do it within our 20 students, but not for a building of 1,600 people. So I think the community building days are trying to get that entire 1,600 to have fun together. And doing the bingo that we did this first round was amazing. We did a scavenger hunt activity at the end of last year, like a kind of goose chase thing that the kids got so into. And one of the things that I wanted to say is I feel like we found a lot of joy this summer working together and really leaning into what the students wanted, because this was for them. And so I really applaud the students here for speaking up and saying what was important to them.
Thank you. I just can't read it anymore because my eyes don't see that far. But that's okay. I don't need to see it. I know what community building's going to do. So I have been part of restorative practices for many years now, and I love restorative practices. But we wanted to bring it to our whole building. And to do that, we've had to do a lot of, a lot of things over the years. And what we, I think we have, we're starting to find the right recipe. It's just taken a while, but our recipe seems to be, and I'm sure it's going to continue to change, right, as all good recipes do. But what we are doing right now is we are really taking, we're taking the people who are our staff. We know that when we have faculty who feel really comfortable and ready and excited to facilitate groups, that that is going to lead to a higher probability of a great experience for students, right, when they're excited about it. So what we're doing is we're pairing faculty who have experience with restorative practices, who've been doing it. We're pairing them with staff who are new to our building or who may be a little bit less comfortable, who maybe haven't had a chance to get trained yet in restorative practices. Which I will say, the district has been amazing at providing opportunities for us to get trained. And a lot of our building has, but we still have a ways to go before all of our staff are trained. So we are pairing new staff and less comfortable staff together. So everyone has, one person in the classroom, maybe two. And the other positive thing about that is, so someone who didn't have a class the period that community building is going on, now that staff member has an opportunity to create connections all year with a whole nother group of students that they wouldn't have gotten to know possibly before. So now we have, you know, eight or nine more opportunities for positive connections during the school year. Wonderful. We're also finding out that our faculty feel the most prepared when we've gone over what we're doing and kind of modeled it in a faculty meeting. They have time to ask questions, to hear about it, to experience some of it. And then we can also make tweaks. So we're doing that. About a week before, we go over it in our faculty meeting, and then we're able to tweak it and make sure that everyone feels comfortable. They have the materials. They're prepared. So that their students can feel really excited when they come in to third period every time. We've been really wanting this for a long time, our larger committee, and we're able to make it happen this year, where students are always with the same group of students and staff all year, the whole year. And one of the really positive things about that is, yes, we are starting with a lot of fun games. We had a really fun time last year running the hallways, no concussions, and really having so much fun with scavenger hunts, bingo, all of those things. But what we do eventually think we'll be able to do is start to have more challenging or deeper conversations because we're building the ability for students to be able to connect a little bit at a time. But we can only do that if we've got that same group of kids building that comfort level with that same staff member or staff members. And of course, I think that says, I think, I think you can tell we're focusing on the joy of learning about and connecting with others. I think you can tell we're really excited about this. We can go on ahead. All right, so is it you talking about what we did?
All right, I am Jess Gruze. I am a senior here at, sorry, at PHS, obviously. I'm going to talk about kind of the positives of Community Building Day for the first one this year and kind of how it went. I was, I believe, very lucky. I was in one of the larger classes. So I really got to experience the truth of how we could all connect. And there are three different grade levels that were in my class as well. We all really were able to bond over bingo specially, just cheering each other on when, like, we only had one left that we needed to get. We were like, come on, like, we know you're going to get that number eventually. And it was just, that really helped to connect us when there were a few sophomores or freshmen that maybe not all of us knew because they're newer. And it was just a lot of us connecting in whatever way we could, whether talking, cheering each other on, messing around a little bit. But, you know, it was all in fair game play, kind of. And I believe that with the time capsule idea, the kind of the idea of it is to, it's formed around identity and kind of figuring out who you are, but not feeling forced to, like, figure out who you are immediately. And that's why there's going to be so many building days with the same group so you have that comfortability. And you can express your ideas kind of with your friends, but not, like, take their idea. And like, you can still find yourself, but in the comfort of it. And I really believe that the positivity from the first building day is really just going to grow as we continue. And like you said, we can adapt and we can do so many things with building day. And I really do think that it's going to go a long way for years, hopefully.
Hello, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Sean Pelkowski. I'm a special education and science teacher here at the high school. Apologize for my voice. I have a bit of a cold I'm recovering from that seems to never end. But like Jess said, one of the things we're really trying to emphasize this year is finding the joy in identity. And also the idea that that identity is, can be very plastic and fluid. It can change. It can be multifaceted, right? There's many different aspects of identity that we can embrace within ourselves and within others. So really, the way we tried to scaffold this out this year with the community building days and how we pace things and how we align things, we tried to come up with some kind of natural points to correlate with. So we started with the interactivity that Jess did a beautiful job of explaining. Next, or this month, it's October now, we'll, on Halloween, which, good or bad idea to do this on Halloween, we're not sure yet. We're doing it. We're all in. Sharing a layer of our identity. And then moving into kind of some natural things, you know, with Thanksgiving being in November, focusing around gratitude and being grateful for our identity, for others' identities. And in December, as we have multiple traditions and holidays celebrated by so many different cultures in that timeframe, looking at traditions and how do we embrace different aspects of those traditions and what they mean to us individually and as a greater school community. And we've intentionally only fully planned and scaffolded these out for the first four months because, just like we want to be responsive with our teaching, we want to be responsive with this. We want to get feedback from faculty, from parents, guardians, caregivers, students, and the greater community. So we're going to continue to meet. And Mr. Kaufman, who fortunately or unfortunately is at his brother's wedding, is not here tonight, is really going to take the point on monthly meetings that this group will have to continue building out the rest of the pacing calendar.
Hi, I'm Stella Luna Jacobovic, and I am a current senior here at PHS. And as was stated, one of the biggest things that we have seen and are kind of understanding is that Community Building Day is not just for, like, you know, it's not a typical class where it's teachers just standing up there and teaching, but it's really for the students. And one of the most important things and aspects of that, we find, especially in the high school, is students kind of wanting to express themselves and, like, make it so it's not just teachers telling you what to do, but for them to be able to lead themselves. And that is one of the most important things, as we said, at our last Community Building Day in December. What we plan to do is to roll out a survey to all students, basically say, how has your experience been? What do you want to see more of? And we are going to take all that feedback and kind of conglomerate, like, take it, review it, and as a group, figure out what the best direction for Community Building Day to go in is. Because what we've kind of understood throughout these years is Community Building Day is really, again, for those students to make sure that our community is bonded together. And as was saying in a previous presentation tonight, that is the kind of foundation of so much. It's the foundation of learning. It's the foundation of security. It's the foundation of pretty much everything, is the idea of creating a safe space for everyone to be in. So do we have any questions, comments?
Board members, questions or comments?
Actually, I'm loving this. I think this is great, and I can hear in your voices the joy of having a voice with this type of thing in your school. Connect to me, and I think you were right at the end, connect to me how this is helping students then take this to then be, be able to feel more connected to the school and academically more successful.
I personally am very much with this, as I have struggled throughout school and history with just not really being able to always fit in as a person who just is that type of person who's normally more of an outcast. And what that ends up doing is kind of isolating you. Because school needs to be a place where kids feel not only like they can learn, but also like that they feel safe there, which is one of the most important things. Because this is well-known, if students feel safe and are able to connect and have those friends, not only does it help them after school, creating friends and just interacting with life, but also it creates kind of like a tight instructure in school. So when they go to class with their friends, they don't feel like, oh, I'm just sitting down here for an hour learning this subject that I don't care about. Instead, they're kind of feeling like, sure, it's not, might not be my favorite subject, but next period I got lunch. And, you know, I can hang out with my best friends. And the idea is that when you have a more tightly-knit community, the students and the staff and everyone in the building will be able to basically be like, oh, I know that person. And especially at such a large school like we have in our communities, where it's not just a school of like 60 people, but 1,600 in the high school. Creating those connections is what allows students to understand, like, to go into a class and be able to see people and go, oh, I know them. I know they like such and such. They're really into soccer. And maybe they are like, maybe I'll strike up a conversation. And creating those safe spaces really, really does help for all students in every aspect of their schooling careers.
You know, if I can add, that was wonderful. If I can add to that, I think as educators, there's a saying that many of you might be familiar with, you know, they, students don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And I think naturally, in our classrooms, individually, we all do so many things to cultivate and build that culture of respect and rapport and safety in our classrooms that we want. And I think this is just really another way to elevate that and formalize it in a way and implement it as another facet of our SEL curriculum.
I have a question. First of all, nice choice in hair color. Love it. So I think in the beginning of the presentation, I believe maybe you mentioned it, the feedback from the students. So can you share a little bit about, like, what some of the feedback was that you've received or any of you have received?
So do you mean initially, the initial feedback? Okay, so when we started community building, like I said, it was a little confusing. I think that students didn't expect to immediately jump into those, like I said, deep conversations about, like, emotions and how you feel in a school environment. Students in a class don't always know each other, like Stella was saying. And so it's important to recognize that and notice that those students weren't really feeling the most comfortable jumping straight into those conversations.
So they weren't feeling safe, like in?
Yeah, not necessarily. I mean, I think, yeah, yeah, we were, they were heavy topics. I mean, at the time, my freshman year, we lost a senior that was a really hard hit for a lot of students. So we covered a lot of those really heavy topics that aren't necessarily the easiest to cover when you're not really aware of how the other students around you are feeling. You don't know them personally. So transitioning to that more team-building to start, like we did with bingo and like we did last year with the scavenger hunt around the school, that just around the school, that just is just like a building block that we can continue to build off of, to have those deeper conversations about suicide awareness, mental health, harmful language. So, yes.
So you're building, so building the community first before you expect it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Folks, wow. This, this is so exciting. And thank you so much for showing up and sharing all the work that you've been doing and your successes, your, I don't want to call them failures, but you know, the bumps that you're meeting and that you're overcoming. I have two alumni from Penfield High School. One, my first one is in his junior year at college, and my second one is a sophomore. And Community Building Days were awful for them. Absolutely awful. They had no clue why in the world it was happening. And now as an adult, and I could see the bigger picture, I'm like, yeah, I, I get why it's happening. And to know that you stuck with it and that you encountered the bumps and went over them and you figured it out and you did the work and that it's getting better. And I loved your words. Can you share your name with me, please?
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, I got too excited.
I love your excitement. No worries. No worries.
I'm Theresa Nita, I'm one of the counselors.
Right, okay. And like your words of you're finding the recipe, you know, and that's what this is. It's always tweaking the recipe. You make a bad batch of cookies, you're not going to give up, right? Gosh, I hope not. You're going to go back and try again, right? And just like tweak the things and figure it out. And Stella, I love that, that you're enjoying this. That, you know, you described yourself as an outcast, and I dislike that word so much, but I, I feel you. I understand that. And that you are finding your place with these same people, right? And that's so important. Like I have gooseies, man, I have gooseies. So thank you so much for your work. And I look forward to when my middle schooler hits high school and maybe she'll have, I know she's going to have a different experience. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Can I go? Okay, I don't want to steal your words because I know you yell at me.
Everything that she says, I just say, yes.
I'm going to start with, first I echo exactly what you say, Krista. I have would be a junior and then a freshman. They were not fans of the Community Building Days. And I have a junior who actually came home and talked about the Community Day. I was like, oh, wow, he doesn't ever share those things. So he was actually really excited about that. Secondly, I just think it's really powerful that this presentation is following Brandon's presentation because he talked about how school climate is like one of our biggest safety pieces that we can put in place. So kudos to you for sticking with it. I heard so many things, I'm just going to list a few, but like you went back to it, like you revisited, you took student feedback, you have student voice, you have student agency, you're collaborating, you're making connections, you're doing all the right things to have that really positive school climate that makes us a safer place. And same, echo what Krista said again, like my heart melted when you said like you feel connected now. And I think that's so important. Like every child, every student should feel connected in our schools. And I love that we're doing this for kids. So thanks for all your work.
I didn't say everything. I kept some off on purpose.
The only thing that I can add is, it's really the same thing, you know, connection is, is so huge. And I'm, I'm glad that we're giving the kids the opportunity, or young adults, the opportunity to build those connections and to feel safe in school. Because to your question, it's so important when a kid feels safe, then they can actually now put on their listening ears, right? And really listen to, to the, the lessons that are being taught, you know, the information that's being provided. So thank you so much for, just like they said, just taking that feedback and tweaking it to make it better for all of our students. Thank you.
And I'll just add, that this is what empowering our students sounds like, looks like, and feels like for our district. The fact that you are a part of the decision-making and how Community Building Days will look for you, and also the importance of your voice as part of this process, I am so proud to be here to listen to all of the wonderful things that you're experiencing as a result of your Community Building Days. And I know just based on what's to come, you will start to dig into some of those conversations that may be a little bit more difficult. But what's important now is that the relationships have been fostered. And you can be brave because there may be safety now in those spaces with your peers to be able to do that. So thank you so much for coming and sharing an update about your Community Days. And I just can't wait to hear more about them. I know that Principal Watt usually invites me when they're happening, so I can just kind of walk in the hallways and peek into classrooms when they're going on. But I'm just so pleased that our school environment and the climate in which you experience school is changing to make you feel like you are a valuable member and you are welcomed and affirmed as students in this district. So thank you so much.
Stella, you have a great smile.
And if you happen to need to slide out the door, you can do that now. Thank you so much for coming. And we have one more update, actually two more updates. We have now, we're going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent for Equity and Access, Ms. Micah Nita Perez.
Good evening, everyone. So I would like to just, you know, start by saying that I would like to celebrate and acknowledge all of the great work that Penfield Central School District has been accomplishing with strengthening relationships, promoting inclusivity, enhancing social emotional learning, as we know that these are vital in terms of a supportive educational environment. And this right here, right, when we heard our, our students speaking to the fact that they feel connected, that they are building relationships, and they find joy in this, speaks to the, the work that the adults, the stakeholders have provided the opportunity, the space to engage in this kind of work. And, and I celebrate that. I'm going into what, my third week as part of the staff here, and it's been a wonderful three weeks. And I want to thank everyone for such a warm welcome. And as I, you know, decided to, you know, learn about, you know, Penfield and listening and just being a part of the community, these are several of the things that portray and provide, you know, all of that that is happening, that supports the relationship building, promoting inclusivity, and enhancing the social emotional learning. So we started out with the faculty opening day, and that was an opportunity, you know, for me and other, you know, staff members to just be a part of that launch, right? Dr. Potter's launch into having a great year. We had the new teacher orientation, and it was a great way to just establish relationships with new staff. The pep rally and the homecoming was amazing. The energy of the students and the staff, and also just being part of the, the homecoming, the food truck rodeo was amazing to see all of the community come out and support. We had an urban suburban ice cream social was an opportunity to get to know the students and just get ourselves out there in terms of who we are, the new position, and having the Director of Student Engagement and Cultural Relationships, you know, be a part of that as well. Also want to, you know, celebrate the fact that as a community, we are open to facilitating restorative circles, not only within the Penfield community, but also extending an invitation to other school districts to participate in those circles. As you heard about the Community Building Days, I look forward to participating in those and just, you know, also being a part of planning with Bay Trail and the high school. We've also, you know, had the opportunity to support the refinement of school and climate culture plans. And, you know, that's an ongoing initiative that we will be continuing to provide the support and make sure that we provide any resource available to enhancing those plans. Also, you know, fortify, fortifying partnerships and honoring contributions of Latino and Latina businesses. We were able to participate in the Rochester Business Association luncheon that basically highlighted the community, Latino community business owners and a particular business person of the year. So we were very fortunate to be in partnership during that luncheon. We also, I myself have had meetings with principals, stakeholders, just to do a meet and greet to make sure that I'm listening, that I'm learning about Penfield, and making sure that I, as I come into, you know, this new role, that I'm there to support, you know, the need of our stakeholders, our schools, our students, our families. And wanted to share what we're working on. So these are some of the initiatives that we are digging into, policies that deal with school climate, DEI, culturally responsive curriculum. Also in the works is a community partnership roundtable. So the idea behind that is inviting community to partner with us in the work that we're doing here as a district. So we currently have many partnerships, but we are looking to enhance what we currently have and just bring people to the table to see how they can align with our initiatives. And we have Rock to Change Summit this year in collaboration with School 58 from the Rochester City School District. So we look forward to co-hosting this, this year through BOSIS. And it'll be an opportunity for students to come up with a theme in terms of what they hope to learn with their peers in the community as it relates to race relations. Just an advertisement, we have the Hispanic Heritage Month Dinner on October 15th. So I invite families and community members to sign up. There's a QR code. All you have to do is scan it and let us know that you're coming and how many people. It'll be a fun night, good food. Okay, Krista?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good food.
I'm there.
And we will have dance lessons and music. So it'll be a very nice night for us to fellowship and to have some fun and eat some great food. And this is just some of the pictures that, you know, from the short time that I've been on board, that just exemplifies the commitment of the Penfield Central School District to make sure that we not only communicate, you know, our plan, but also be engaged in the work by being present at events and just making sure that we make ourselves available to be of support. And I look forward to all of the great initiatives and working in partnership with everyone. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Dr. Driffl, sorry. Board members, questions or comments?
Welcome. Welcome, welcome. And thank you for doing this work and showing up. And I just scanned, and I'm going to fill out my form. I'm going to be there. Okay, folks? Let's get together and eat some good food. All right?
Dance.
Steve?
I'm ready.
All right, cool, 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 cool. And Dan, I'm sorry. You have to follow all of that.
What if I bring good cookies?
Bring good cookies? No, but I mean, like you now have to talk about...
I know.
I'm sorry.
I know, it's a...
Yeah.
You're used to it.
You talk about food.
We all have our roles.
Food.
Yeah.
Metaphor.
Multifying cookies or something.
Specifically sugar cookies.
Taxing cookies.
With that riveting segue, I will jump in. A handful of items on your agenda packet this evening that require approval from my office. The first of which is capital project change orders. There are many of them on this agenda. A lot of them are small. They're kind of the end of summer sort of little closeout punch item type of changes that the contractor or we requested. There were two larger ones that I wanted to point out. They were both our requests. One was for the north lot here at PHS to add additional striping with kind of the reconfiguration of the parking lot, additional signage. Just try to be a little bit more clear in that design with safety in mind. The second was adding additional data drops in what will be the reconfigured library. When our, our technology team got a hold of it, they have just requested more, more ports and things like that. So we accommodated that request. We have a capital project bid award. So this is for sound, the PA system at the new turf field. We had previously awarded this, but when we went back to the contractor to de-scope, we realized we wanted more kind of additional features. So we put it back out to bid, and actually the same contractor won it. But we just wanted to reapprove the new bid in accordance with all the general municipal laws. As we heard from our auditor, Mr. Zuber from Mingle Metzgerbar earlier, we have to approve our annual external audit and associated corrective action plan. I'll talk about that more in a moment. As he also mentioned, the audit committee met last week. In that meeting, we reviewed the committee charter. The Board of Education, as opposed, as written in that charter, needs to reauthorize the charter on an annual basis. So that is an agenda action item for you. And then we have more private duty, private duty nursing agreements to approve. We had approved two, I think, at either the September or the August meeting, but we have another few that need the board's approval. Those contracts are now all finalized and good to go. So touching a little bit further on the year-end audit. So this is for the 23, 24 year that ended the fiscal year in June, June 30th. As Mr. Zuber mentioned, we ended the fiscal year in really strong financial position. We were able to put about $4 million back into reserves. So we went from $31 million to about $35 million in reserves on a district budget of $119 million. That's a pretty healthy place to be. We'll talk much more about reserves and fund balance as we move into the budget development season for the 25, 26 year. So I think usually we do that, kind of a kickstart at our December meeting where we do the annual reserve plan. So we'll identify all the reserves in our, in our plans for all of those reserves. As he also mentioned, there were no deficiencies or material weaknesses identified. So that's obviously a positive. There were two processes requiring corrective action noted in the audit. The first of which is were stack submissions. So stack is the student, student tracking activity, something, I forget the acronym. But that is how we file cost reports to the state for students with specialized programming, specialized needs. For the extended school year, E S Y, the summer program, we provide transportation for all those kiddos. And some of the paperwork was late to be filed to the state to make sure we're getting the appropriate aid on those summer transportation. It was eventually filed and we're getting the aid for it, but he pointed out the fact that it was late to be filed. That was due to turnover in one of the offices that handles those things. So since it's been, it's since been rectified, we think we have a good plan moving forward. It shouldn't be an issue moving forward, but it was, it was late. The second item requiring corrective action was a payroll error for an employee that switched jobs mid-year. So this was for an employee last spring who moved from a teaching position to an administrative position. Basically, the payroll error, we, we overpaid her a little bit based on just days calculated. So we instituted a new process to have an additional accounting check on that. And then we're also going to have the employee repay back what was overpaid. So it was a great catch by the auditor. And we think we have a process to address those kinds of things moving forward. As he did mention, there were also two prior year actions that required, required corrective action that were both completed through the auditor's satisfaction. So those didn't stay on the report for this year. Those were both cleared off. And with that, I would open it up to any board discussion relevant to my topics.
Board members, questions, comments? Good job, Dan.
Good job.
Good job, Dan.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No cookies, right?
The whole presentation, Elia was thinking about cookies.
I was.
We are very hungry. We haven't had dinner.
Yeah.
That concludes superintendent's report.
All right, so we are moving on to public comments. And we have two people. I'm trying to pull it up.
It's weird, but yes.
Okay, so we have Mr., can you say your last name?
Teich.
Teich. Okay. And Morgan Phelps, can I just ask a favor of you? Because we have a student that's presenting, and it's kind of late, do you mind if she?
Please.
Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you so much.
Dear School Board, I am Morgan Phelps and I have come to talk about the lunch situation at Bay Trail. As you probably know, the lunchroom has been split into two parts with the divider in the middle of the cafeteria. I understand why we were split up, but the kids at Bay Trail were much happier when we got to sit with our friends. If the lunchroom continues to be split in half, kids could lose friendships with classmates because they cannot talk to them. Not only can we not sit with our friends, but there's only 20 minutes to eat. Can you imagine rushing to eat your lunch, barely talking to your friends just to avoid being hungry? It is not fun. I hope that you understand now that we need to be brought back together. I used to look forward to going to lunch, but now I don't really care anymore. I see some of my friends, but I barely get to talk to them because I am rushing to eat. I also used to buy lunch all the time, but now I do not. By the time you get to your table, there's only 10 minutes left. Thank you for your time today. I hope that you will consider allowing Bay Trail students to eat lunch together again and give us more time to eat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Teich.
Hello. My name is Dr. Stephen Teich, and I am the chairperson of the Department of Chemistry and Biochemistry at Nazareth University, where I have taught organic chemistry for 14 years. Over the years, I have taught more than 30 Penfield graduates, many of whom majored in natural sciences or pursued careers in health professions. Early in my teaching career, Penfield graduates consistently ranked among the top performers in my classes. This significantly influenced my decision to move to Penfield in 2012 and raise my family, where my children are now in sixth and eighth grade. Unfortunately, I have witnessed a noticeable decline in the academic readiness of Penfield graduates in recent years. In 2015, I began tracking the performance of my students based on the high schools they attended after noticing a consistent pattern of success amongst certain students. I observed that students from Hilton were exceptionally well-prepared for the rigor of college academics. These students not only possessed a solid foundational knowledge, but also demonstrated the ability to apply this knowledge to new content areas, data analysis, and laboratory experiments. They excelled in showcasing these skills through clear and coherent writing. Over the past nine years, the average score of my first exam in organic chemistry class has been 78%, while the average for Penfield graduates is 70%. For the first lab report, my class average is 83%, whereas the average for Penfield graduates is below 65. Penfield students often struggle with communication, particularly when it comes to technical writing. When I meet with these students after the first exam, lab report, or both, I often hear a recurring theme. They feel unprepared for higher education, specifically in study skills, time management, and writing proficiency. I want to clarify, this does not mean these students are failing college. In many cases, this serves as a wake-up call or their first real gut check. However, it can also mean they are placed on academic probation or dismissed in competitive programs of study. Only on the rarest occasions has my eighth grader had an at-home assignment during his entire time at Bay Trail. He has maintained a grade of over 95% in ELA throughout middle school, yet his writing skills are simply insufficient. I have now enrolled him in supplemental education to address this deficit out of concern that he might follow the troubling trend I've observed. I genuinely believe that Penfield's current academic rigor is not setting our college-bound students up for success. In closing, I want to emphasize that academic success should not be judged by merely meeting minimal standards. That is striving for mediocrity. Furthermore, college will not allow students to retake tests or correct their work. This should not be the first time students are held accountable for lack of preparation, especially considering the extraordinarily high cost of higher education. Thank you for listening, and I welcome further discussions on this important topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on 6A change orders. Can I please have a motion in a second that the change orders as described above be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Did you get everyone? Okay, thank you. All in favor, none opposed? Can I have a motion in a second that the resolution as described above be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? As we look at the appointments, can I please have a motion in a second that the reorganization appointments be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Second. And I won't read them this time. All in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Financial items, 8A. Can I please have a motion in a second that the annual external audit by Mango Metzer Bar and Company, LLP, Raymond F. Wagner CPA, PC Division of the District's basic financial statements and the management letter for the year ending June 30th, 2024 be accepted, and further that the associated proposed corrective action be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Okay, can I please have a motion in a second that the Board of Education accepts the reauthorization of the Audit Committee Charter?
So moved.
Second.
Aliyah and Nicole. Questions or comments? All in favor? All in favor, none opposed? And can I please have a motion in a second to approve independent contractor agreements with De Neres Rodriguez, Amanda Pharoah Cavetti, Marcella Ombrog, Katrina Martin for the performance of private duty nursing services for medically fragile students effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025?
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? The teacher in me was really trying hard to pronounce those names correctly. It was frustrating.
Yeah, you did.
Sorry. I just had to put that out there. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? And then we have the Monroe County School Boards Committee Meetings. Were there any?
There was one. It's just been a long time since we had the workshops last, at the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Actually, there was one and then sort of one and a half. So there was the Legislative Lunch, and then there was a District Operations Committee that I got an email about that was via Zoom. So I attended that too, since I was able to attend via Zoom.
Yeah, the Zoom is nice.
So the Legislative Lunch, Dr. Potter could fill in, where, because I just have one line of notes for that, just that there was three hot topics that the legislative that this committee is dealing with right now, which is state aid, the fact that electric bus mandate deadline will likely get pushed back, and cell phones. And then the Operations Committee was all about cell phones. So I wanted to know more about that. So I, that's why I attended that via Zoom. So at that presentation, there was a presentation by Grease, Central School District, one of the assistant superintendents. And they just talked about their, the reasons why they decided to ban cell phones. And they said that after, let's see, sorry. Oh, so after the pandemic, they, just in the SEL screening, they just saw lower favorable responses in terms of how often did you remain calm when somebody was bothering you? How often, how often did you stay calm under stress? How often did you pull yourself out of a bad mood? And 72% said they couldn't regulate their strong emotions. And that students themselves said that cell phones were part of the problem. That, that the cell phones also led to fighting and no longer engaging with each other. And that the cell phones were how kids linked up to, to obtain drugs, and also to skip class, and also the anxiety over social media. So they set up a whole policy committee that met over a course of a year. And, let's see, they used the summer to begin to communicate the plan. They're sort of piloting this right now. They used the summer to begin to communicate it. Each building had its own implementation. Let me skip ahead. They, I'll skip ahead to what they found during this, during the first year that this was put in place. The defiance was cut in half, disruption went down, substance abuse went down, physical altercations went down significantly, there was an increase in student achievement, student engagement increased, improvement in mental health, sharp decline in mental health arrests, student perception survey improvements, meaning I feel seen and heard by my teachers. They see, they see kids talking rather than talking, talking with each other rather than being on their phones. The same in the cafeteria, higher degree of learning. Teachers are expected to model this, meaning teachers are also encouraged to not be on their phones. They show the kids the data during assemblies, and the kids feel and see the difference themselves. The teachers are less frustrated, they're happier, and they're wanting more to stay in the profession because they're not always policing cellphone use. So, yeah, I, I thought it was, gosh, I can't think of the right word, but that they, they have no doubt that they've made the right decision. And I thought it was interesting to hear about. And, you know, I recognize that there are, I also read an article about parental stress and how social media, knowing that their kids struggle socially and that social media is part of the culprit, one of the culprits in that. So that parents, they mentioned also that parents appreciate this, although the parental response was mixed in that, on the one hand, parents appreciated it because they want their kids to socialize more. They want their kids off of social media at least seven hours during the day. They want their kids to learn and not be on their phone. So parents, but at the same time, another contributing factor of parental stress is what Mr. Fox talked about, is the whole thing of, are my kids safe in school? And knowing that their students have phones sort of alleviates some of that stress. And then, you know, as, yeah, so, so I, I think it's worth future conversations about.
And I, I'll just make a comment about the information that was shared from that district. So we're not comparing apples to apples. We're also taking a look at, we have about 4,700 students. They have 10,000 plus in that district. I think that the, just overall makeup of our districts, so we're not comparing similarities when we're thinking about the information or the research that came out of that. The other thing is taking a look at our data, because we just implemented a new code of conduct and support, and we've only been living under that new code for a year. But our code specifically talks about how we prohibit in grades K through 12, the use of electronic devices. And only at grades nine through 12 that it should be used as an instructional tool as assigned by their teachers. So I think that that's kind of the place where I know that there's lots of conversation around banning cell phones or even the pouches that some districts are going to, to kind of enclose where kids are checking in those, those devices at the start of every class. Then you think about the management for all of that. So I think it's such a big conversation that requires, if they talked about the policy and engaging in conversation for a year, we would absolutely need to make sure that many voices, many stakeholders were at the table if we were going to invite our district to engage in a conversation similarly. Just because we want to make sure that when we're making some of those decisions, that it is truly representative of many voices that are a part of how we're informing what our district next step should look like. So I do, I do appreciate you sharing that because I know that we had some of our assistant superintendents that went in person and came back and had just some initial thinking around it as well. And listening to our community around when do we start to hold those conversations, because we have language and we don't necessarily experience similar disruptions maybe that they did, that their data showed them, to lead them to making that as a choice for their district holistically.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a lot there in that, that discussion. A lot for us to consider.
Okay, we also had district community committee meetings, so district committee meetings?
We did have audit meeting last week. I don't know that I have anything really to add. I think Tom said it all, honestly. Probably just with, you know, we did review our charter, which was up for approval. We had our corrective actions. I don't know. I think one of the things that I walked away the most, not the most, but thinking, like, proud of the choices that we made, is he talked about two things that we have saved a lot of interest for, by how we're using our reserve fund. Thank you, couldn't pull the word out of my brain. We've saved our district a lot of money, basically, our taxpayers a lot of money that way. And also just how we have used our, oh my goodness, it's late and I can't think. Our state aid, thank you. Our state aid. So we used them for things that we're not then going to have to pull the money out for, like, we didn't use it for like, oh, we're going to hire 10 new teachers and now we have to pull that out of our general fund.
One-time purchases.
Yeah, those one-time purchases. So we were very purposeful in our purchases that we made with our state aid funding. I don't know.
Can I just add to?
Please add.
The fact that I attribute a lot of our good budgeting practices to Dr. Driffl.
Oh, absolutely.
So I feel as a district, we have made some really sound financial decisions. And the work that comes in and out of his office helps our district to be fiscally responsible. So to hear the audit report this evening and to know that, you know, we had a few things that we know that we have corrective actions for, I, I feel strongly that a lot of the good things that our district currently has in place is because of how Dr. Driffl pays such close attention to every detail and support of our community, our residents, and the ways in which our district should function financially. So thank you, Dr. Driffl, for your work.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Driffl. Got some extra cookies. Any, anything else? Any other committee meetings? Okay. All right, unfinished business?
New business?
Or, new, unfinished, either or. It could be, I guess, under. Take it away. Well, this is news for the community, not so much for my colleagues at this table here, Aunt Newsfer Helen. But I have made the personal decision to step down from the Board of Education here at Penfield. I'm just going to read the letter that I have submitted to Emily, our president. "After thoughtful consideration, I am writing to formally resign from my position on the Penfield Central School District Board of Education effective tomorrow, the 2nd. It has been an absolute honor and privilege to serve our district alongside such a talented and dedicated board. And I want to take this moment to celebrate the tremendous leadership of our superintendent, Dr. Potter, as well as the hard work and commitment of this entire Board of Education. I would also like to express my heartfelt gratitude to the community for trusting me with the responsibility of representing them. This has been one of the most rewarding experiences of my life, and I will be always appreciative of the opportunity to serve the district in this capacity."
of the opportunity to serve the district in this capacity. So thank you again for the opportunity to serve. I wish nothing but continued success for our board, our wonderful superintendent, and the entire Penfield school community. And I look forward to supporting the district's ongoing efforts in new and meaningful ways in the future. Sincerely, Megan Callen. I have, as everyone here knows, three children still in the district. I continue to be part of parent groups of, apparently I'm part of the senior BASH committee now. And the Athletic Boosters Club, parent group, sorry. And just deeply involved, particularly with my son at Scribner-Rotham Elementary School, where I have had nothing but tremendous support, care, and concern for my little one, even though he's almost 10 now. And, and also my high school, now high school students. And I think that the direction that this board and this district are taking, including our outstanding assistant superintendents, is powerful for people, is powerful for community. And we are part of the village that is raising young folks. I was at, earlier today, I work on East Main Street in the city of Rochester, and I went, did my quick walk to McDonald's to get my large Diet Coke. And it's right when East High School is getting out of school. And so I'm in McDonald's with, there had to have been 40 young people in the McDonald's. And it gave me such a great boost, because I entered through the wrong door, so a young man showed me the door to enter McDonald's. What I witnessed there was sharing of food, of drink, jokes between students, but also between the staff and the students that were there, which is not an easy thing to do in a for-profit organization that is often targeted around our high schools. Mike Niesa probably knows what I'm talking about. It was, for me, a celebration, and it echoed for me what I experienced regularly here in Penfield. Where it's going to continue to be, and I, I'm so sorry I have my back to you, Ann Brandon Fox and Nancy Bradstreet, that I've, that I've experienced, I know will continue to experience, and what I will never lose faith in is the care and concern, again, back to who our young people are and who we want them to be as they grow. So thank you.
Meg, thank you for, you know, your service being on the board. Your thoughts, your opinions, very valuable, you know, in the work that we've started to do so far this school year. So thank you for that. In consultation with our attorney, the board has the following options when a vacancy occurs. We can appoint an individual to serve until the general election in May. We could hold a special election within 90 days of the vacancy. Or we could leave the seat vacant until the general election in May. As a board, we haven't made that decision yet, but we will come to that agreement or that decision shortly, and then share that with the community. And again, thank you, community, for all of your support, and just for the board and for the district. With that, does anyone else have any comments or anything to say? Okay. Can I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 8:33 PM? So moved. Aleah and Nicole? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed?